Angelica, when you're ready, will you please call the roll?
Winters.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Eckhart.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Hannaford. Stelling.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
All right. Before we get too far into the agenda, I do want to let everybody know that we're going to be moving a couple of things around. We do have set up at the pool, if you're here to speak in regard to the pool. We're going to have the public hearings and information regarding the pool at the pool. So we'll recess, if you will, this meeting, move to the pool. We can show you some of the things that are going on out there and have the public hearing at the pool. So if you are here for the pool, we do have a hefty agenda, but we're not trying to avoid that. We just, from some of the feedback I've gotten, it sounded like it would be a good idea to have that at the pool, so we will do that. The first item is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request it to be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on June 17, 2019. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $111,682.18 and payroll expenses of $281, excuse me, $281,984.98. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm going to approve consent agenda.
I have a motion by Randy Stelling and second by Mary Hamilton to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item six are reports from staff. First report will be from the tourism commission meeting on June 19, 2019. Mr. Martin, do you have a report for us?
I'm unable to make that meeting.
Joe Don, do you have anything for that meeting?
It was a pretty light agenda, it looks like. They did, they did four minutes in claims and financials. There was one discussion item for the Mesketunga Golf Park tournament not to exceed $6,000, and it looks like that was approved.
Any questions from the council regarding the tourism meeting?
Joe Don, do you by chance know why they tabled the financial report?
I do not. I was not at that meeting. I do not know.
Item, okay, any other questions? Next item is the Alba Hospital Authority meeting on June 25th. Dr. Hannaford isn't here. The minutes are in the packet. I think everybody can see the minutes in their packets too, if they got on our website. We'll go ahead and move on from there. Item C is Park and Building Committee meeting on June 26th. Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes. We've talked at length about the roof over on the professional building, and we received four bids. That's an item on the agenda later on, so we'll have more time to discuss it later in the meeting. And we also talked about the pool at length and had a lot of conversations and ideas, but again, that's also later in the meeting, so everything we discussed is going to be talked about later too.
Council have any questions for Mary?
I'd like to point out, we did receive four bids, and we got four varying--
Very did.
Very varying bids. So the item later on in the agenda is we narrow down the scope of what we want to happen to the roof on the professional building and actually go out for bids for that specific.
It was a wide range from less than 50 to 180,000.
Well, it was 43 to 178,000.
So a lot of difference there, a lot of variance, a lot of difference in material that they were going to use and--
Item D is the Alba Public Library Board meeting on July 8, 2019. Mr. Eckhart?
Okay, relatively routine meeting. Talked about the summer library program, fairly good attendance at that. We discussed some of the library numbers and financials, found out that there was some strange discrepancies that weren't understood, and they kind of figured out how to fix those in terms of numbers of checkouts and things along those lines. We did purchase, they did purchase some more iPads for the youth down the area of the library. It's important to note that these are not connected to the Internet, so the kids don't actually have access to anything except for the applications that are put on these computers, and these were done with state aid funding. They did finish replacement of the two air conditioners that needed replaced, one in the basement, one on the large roof. As pretty much as soon as those got replaced, two smaller units are going to be in need of replacement. One of them is not working, and the other one's been heavily damaged by hail, like the whole fence on it are kind of flat. But those are in the budget for this fiscal year, so that shouldn't be an issue whatsoever. And then the last major thing we did was, oh, the library were changing their email address by joining other departments or the city of Alba email, trying to get everything in one unified format. And then we had our elections for library board for the next fiscal year, and Chairman Wilt was re-elected chairman again, and then Director Hamilton was re-elected as secretary.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Eckhart?
Was the smaller unit that was damaged by hail, was that an insurance claim, or were we--
I don't think that, the unit's not working, it's not not working because of hail, it's just got some damage on it. There's other, it's mostly the internal parts that are not working, so, yeah. That'd be a question to ask Director Hamilton if further. I wasn't brought up, so.
Now, they get, most of their damage is due to age, compression, that's usually what they're--
Pretty well appreciated.
Yeah.
They're on nonstop, so.
It's not due to the, not due to any storm damage that we may have had over recent years.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? All right, thank you, Chris. Item E is the Alba Regional Airport Committee Commission meeting on July 8, 2019. Pretty light agenda for the airport board. We did have some discussion over terminal security and gave the airport manager some leeway to do what he felt best to keep the terminal secure. We had a brief update with regard to water lines and meters going to individual hangars at the airport, but there were no other reports and there was no other action taken other than approving the minutes of previous meetings. I'm happy to answer any questions from the council.
Is it common for--
Go ahead.
Is it common for us to leave a key to where anybody can get into it?
Not to where anybody can get into it. It's a secure box that--
It is a secure box.
That if a pilot has to come in and there's not attendings there, that the manager can inform them of how to access the terminal.
I'm not familiar, but what would they need in a terminal in fact, so present?
They need to, they may need to check flight, you know, information, they may need to, you know, use restroom, you know, to be in other things.
Is there a log of someone entering the building? Do we keep that log?
That'd be a better question for the manager.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
How far out are we on metering? That'd be a question.
We are working on getting our plan put together. We've got to run fire, we're going to be running water lines and then adding the additional meters out there, so we're at least two months out before we can start construction.
Next item is the Alba Arena Authority meeting on July 9, 2019. I have a copy of the minutes. I think that Angelica just got them late this afternoon, but they'll be open record. They did, you might have seen in the paper, they did go out for bid on the project, so we look to see whether, or we'll be watching to see whether the bids come in at a level that the arena authority will accept them, and if so, look forward to groundbreaking and those kind of activities going on with the arena. I'm not going to be able to answer any questions other than once in a minutes, but if we have something on, I'd be happy to do so. Next item is the Finance Committee meeting on July 15, 2019. Mr. Sherman, can you give us your report?
I went over the large claims and financial report from the month. Discussed the SRO contracts for the schools for the next upcoming year. Did increase the contracts by 5%, but we've left them level the year before, so to keep up with cost of living raises given to the officers, we increased those a little bit. Went over a little bit on the funding request, and we're still looking into some of those things for the senior citizens meal program. And then went over the bid estimates or putting out for bid the booster pump stations. Miss Angelica?
We'll hit some of the other fines for more things that we're doing, and that's not--
Council members have any questions for Mr. Sherman?
I guess, I don't know about the senior citizen finance for their meals?
Yeah, it used to be through Alita.
Right.
And now it's been moved over to CADC out of Tillman County.
Yes.
And they're requesting some funding from, additional funding from the city of Alba over and above what Woods County is doing. So we're just making sure that they've requested from Woods County and some other things before we offer funding that either isn't necessary or if they didn't request prior.
I've got a call in, Commissioner Hamel, and he indicated that he checked on that tomorrow, let us know what's, what the county's involvement is.
Okay.
All right, next item is the Mayor's report. Kind of a busy time of year. A lot of things going on, but probably most of what I have to say, I'll say later in the agenda. We've got several people here for various different reasons this evening, and so we'll get to those items as they come up. Business managers' report.
I'll try to hit me grief on a lot of this and consideration of time. We have been working toward the electronic timekeeping and payroll system. We can see, this was part of the plans for this year is to convert to this type of program. Have met with one, a third party for one of them, been meeting with another third party vendor on the 25th of this month. Don't have any firm, any firm estimates right now on what the cost of this will be, but it is a budgeted expenditure that we're looking into.
What's the benefit of that?
Uh-huh. Benefit, more accurate timekeeping would be one of the main benefits of it.
For?
Well, for all employees.
For all employees.
Yes, all employees will be clocking in and out. The way it is right now, we don't have time clock errors. I mean, we've got, we don't have, some departments don't have a time clock. Some departments do. It would reduce, because it's electronic and downloaded automatically, there's less errors on time sheets, on time cards as far as the calculations of what should be paid for payroll. There are a number of things that they handle, the third party, that we would reallocate, that we have employees that do right now, but we would reallocate those employees for in positions that we currently have open, that we're not, that we are not actively recruiting for because of--
This wouldn't cut anybody out of a job?
No. Would not cut anybody out of a job. We have met, I have met with the employees, the employees that are going to be affected by it as far as job is concerned, and explained, explained everything to them about how this, how my, how my thoughts on how it was going to work right now. That may change after our meeting with this other, with the, with another company, but we'll have more conversations if that is the case. I had meetings with department heads as far as how this is going to be brought down the pack to them and asked them to be communicating that to their employees. As a group or individually, how they sell best to communicate that. It is, we are doing it as an efficiency improvement. There are some things that will have to happen, such as getting Internet access to the transfer station, where sanitation workers clock in and out. That does not happen, that does not have Internet access right now. So there'll be some of that thing, some of those things that have to maybe be changed before we can go switch over to the system, but that's the way we're moving. We're currently advertising and currently seeking for seasonal riding wave mowers still. Two E and Ts, one paramedic and two sanitation drivers. The projects that we've got working on and in the works are the replacement of some water transmission line from the well field to town. This project is currently on hold due to the time of year that we're in. The heat of the summer's not a good time to start taking some of our transmission line out of service, so we're going to wait until it's more of a fall/winter type of program. We have completed the installation of the new chlorine equipment at the swimming pool, and we've constructed the wastewater line and lift station to the main lines. We are currently evaluating what all goes on there and how we fund it as part of what some of the public hearings will be about tonight. We are working on the chlorination sanitation station down about, between here and the well field. This project is slated to be completed by August 7. They're currently waiting on some metering equipment and a prefab building to finish that project up. Our well field rehabilitation, we are working to get that. We've got, we are waiting on getting some, getting a prefab building in to get set. That will be, we'll be able to call DEQ to get both of our new, our water wells, number 64 and 67, that were taken offline due to possible ECO lock contamination, back in service. But DEQ will have to inspect those before they come back in service. We had the pre-work conference on the sanitary lift station on Skyline Drive. That work should be started on July 8. It is slated to be complete by September 9. The professional building, which we will talk more about later, is, I've been working to try to get that, that fixed and aftermath repaired. There's some other reports in there from different committees that we already talked about. Street Department has completed the overlay on about 12 different blocks this summer. We were 11th Street north of Mill, 11th Street from Flynn Drive to Santa Fe, 7th Street from the alleys between church and center, and the alley between Flynn and Barnes was completed. Barnes Avenue from college to 10th Street, and Choctaw Street from college to Third. There's been, Harvest was pretty hard on Santa Fe Street and the 200 block of 9th Street, and we will be looking at what needs to be done to those streets. Recently, we completed some, the work on 11th Street, should have completed the work on 12th Street today, and the crew, street crews will be moving to overlay Maple Street, should have moved up there today. As far as financially, we're talking at the end of June, the city had budgeted to receive $14 million, a little over at the end of June, it had received 11.9. Budgeted expenditures were 12.7. Actual expenditures were 11 million. Transfers out were 1.3 million dollars. Our fund balance went from 5.7 million to 5.3 million. There was a, there was a planned shortage of $400,000 from previous year's collections that was taken this budget year, during the last budget year. As far as loans are concerned, we made just a little over a million dollars worth of principal and interest payments. The total money owed at June 30 was 6.5 million dollars. Our sales tax for the month of June received was, sales and use were, well, sales tax was 343,000, use tax was 23,000. This is for a total of 366, which is up about $5,000 from May of 2019, and it was up for 33, nearly 40, $34,000 from June of 2018. By this time of the month, we are privileged to get the, our sales tax numbers for July, our sales and use tax numbers for July are 100, or $334,000, which is 19,000 decrease from July of 2018. June 2030 numbers will end up about 7% more than what they were, 7% more than what was collected in, at June 2018, but about 4% less than what was budgeted. Our utility report as of June 30, June 2019, we'd build out, well, for the month of June 2019, we'd build out $283,000 for utilities. This was up just about half a percent from June 2018, and was up 10, 10.2% from the previous year. We pumped about 35 million gallons from the well field for that month. Our AGM report, we've got the majority of our outstanding collectibles are in the current column, and that's at 85%. 3% is over one month. 0.7% over two months, 0.9% over three months, and about 8% over four months. We will be needing to do a, some write-offs here in the next month or so, and I would remind you that where that, that's just an accounting procedure for us. It does not take the money off the books. We still actively try to collect it, but that's that process. We had budgeted for about $3.8 million worth of capital improvements. Actually spent about 1.2 million dollars. Most of those projects that were not completed or were not spent were due to monies not received for the, for the programs, such as the TAP grant for the walking trail. We didn't receive that grant. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't do the project. The only remaining project that we've got left out of our 2018 revenue bonds is the booster pumps for the water tower at 14th and Oklahoma Boulevard, and we'll be discussing that a little later on during the meeting. And Mayor and council, that would be my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council members have any questions for Joe Don?
How much does the INCODE module, payroll module cost us? What were the savings on that by only--
The maintenance on that's about $2,000 or $3,000 a year, but it doesn't do everything that some of these other modules, some of these other, this third party does. We would be looking at, when we were looking at INCODE to add the module for the electronic timekeeping a couple of years ago, that they never could get implemented for us, that was going to be about a $20,000 purchase.
Any other questions for Joe Don?
Keller, I just want to tell the department heads that they did a great job reporting their activities that they've done throughout the year, by the, throughout the year. It's really interesting, and can the puppet, they can get on to this?
Yes.
It's really interesting because it tells you how many runs the ambulance has done, how many the fire department's done, how many the police has done, how many yards were reported for grass being too tall, how many were taken care of. I mean, if you want to know what these, all these departments are doing, it's in here, every bit of it. Really interesting.
Next item is number seven is the public hearing on land and water conservation fund grant application. This is a grant for the pool project, so we'll move that, like I said, to the end of the agenda and go on to item number eight, presentation by kids and cops on their upcoming event, Who Done It Theater. I think we have Patrick Colley here to give presentation.
We're wanting to do a fundraiser called Who Done It Theater. We don't have any details yet. I don't know if anybody's ever heard of one of those. Basically, they pay for a meal, they sit down and eat a good meal and see a show. The program started, I think, three years ago. We done shopping with the kids three years. It's blew up. It's been great for the community, so we want to continue to grow.
From what Chief has explained to me, you can confirm, or I hope confirm, but it sounds like it'd be a very entertaining evening where people from the community would, it would almost be like--
It is a play.
A play.
And they act out the parts. And I've done one, and it is a lot of fun.
So, I, for one--
You're the person you thank.
I, for one, and I think all the council members and the great, vast majority of the community would agree, that the things that you guys are all doing with the Kids and Cops program have been pretty incredible, and I bet your fundraiser would be a great success. Does the council have any questions for Assistant Chief?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Pat. Next item is presentation by the Census Bureau on the 2020 census complete count. Tricia Woodward is with us, and I think she'd like to share a few words, but I, and you, or would you like to share a few, I believe?
Oh, yes, certainly. Thank you. Do I stand here?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and residents. On behalf of the Census Bureau, I am elated to be here because Mr. Dunham, and I spoke with Alex as well, are in support of the 2020 census. Every 10 years, Congress mandated from 1790 that everyone should be counted, and as a result of the count, federal dollars are appropriated. We have over $675 billion that will be distributed across the United States to cities and towns. What happens when we do not count everyone is we say, somebody else get our money, okay? We get appropriation in Congress. I have a congressman that has brought up to me that in 2000, Oklahoma lost representation. It has not been said that Oklahoma is going to get one. It has not been said that Oklahoma is going to get one. But me, since I've worked in three censuses already, two thousand, twenty-ten, and now, we don't know. But if we count everybody, we may, if not get another representative, surely we'll get more dollars coming to our communities, for our roads, for our schools, for our senior centers, for our hospitals, very affordable housing. The dollars just come in when we count everybody. So what the census wants you to know is that the information that is provided is safe, it's confidential, and it's easy to complete. This time, we will be able to go online and answer the questions and press the button, and we're done. The census wants the community to target those folks that are hard to count. And the people that are hard to count will be rural areas with the post office boxes because the census mail to household, and as you're aware, no one lives at a post office box. But there will be ways to get the census form or the website to that person. Then we have people who are not internet connected. We are asking our libraries to make the computers available to the residents, that they can go in and do that. So we are asking for trusted voices, of which each one of you are, you're elected, your residents trust you, to share with them, to educate them, that it is for the benefit of the community that the census form was done. I, I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but I'd like to ask, how many people here use Amazon? And you may notice that you get these extra emails that you didn't sign up for. Well, that's because Amazon shares your information. Your government does not. For seventy-two years, everything you put in is confidential, and the only thing that's released are the numbers, so that we can provide a higher quality of life for the residents. We want to count everybody once and only once in the right place. Do you have any questions?
I, I appreciate you coming out, and I'll just inform everybody that as we, most of you know Dr. Kate Decker is, is writing for grants for our community, you know, all the time, and different things that are going on. She finds that on many occasions that what we perceive to be the makeup of our, of our community and what is documented in the, the files in Washington are often different things. And oftentimes, that's led to us not qualifying for some of the grant funding that has been available, or should have been available, to our community. Like Ms. Woodward said, that money's going to go somewhere, and if we qualify for it, then, then we think we should at least have a shot at it. I know that most of us aren't in the habit of wanting to provide a lot of detailed information about ourselves to a government entity, and, and we, I mean, I can't say that there should, there hasn't been reason at times for skepticism, but I, I do believe that the census data is something that, that we definitely need to, to get documented appropriately in Washington, whether it be for fair representation or whether it be for the grant funding. And our next item has to do with the proclamation that we would like to sign this evening as the City Council's support for us moving for, or us encouraging our community to participate in the census. With that, I, I do appreciate it, and if you've got anything to add.
I, I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for acknowledging Dr. Decker, because this gentleman over here, Mr. Ethan Sackett, is the liaison for the Woods County Commissioners to form a complete count committee, and Alva could be a part of that committee, members from your community, or Alva could establish its own, to go to those folks who are resistant, and we understand why, and share with them that you believe that it's safe, easy, and confidential. And I thank you so much for the proclamation, which is about to come, right? Well, thanks again. I, you, you may not see me, and I want to share this with you. The state of Oklahoma will have sixteen partnership specialists. I have been on board for a year and been all over this great state. However, there's only so much a little old lady can do. So, so they're putting together some other folks. So if someone comes, it may not be me, but it will be a representative from the Census Bureau. We're sworn to secrecy for life and under penalty of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and five years in jails. And so my thing is, I might can come up with the two fifty, but the jail time. So thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to the proclamation.
Thank you. So the next item, item number ten, is discussion action on a two thousand and twenty census complete count proclamation. In the packet, and I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Is it hard to read?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Proclamation, whereas the next decennial census will be taken in the year two thousand and twenty, and political representation to the United States House of Representatives, state legislatures, and local governments is determined by the census, and the census is also the basis for the distribution of many forms of intergovernmental financial assistance. And whereas an accurate census count is vital to our community and residents' well-being by helping planners determine where to locate schools, daycare centers, roads, and public transportation, hospitals, and other facilities, and is used to make decisions concerning business growth and housing needs. And whereas the City of Alva Mayor and City Council recognize the importance and value of counting each and every resident in the two thousand and twenty census, and whereas the City of Alva has agreed to enter into a partnership with the U.S. Bureau of the Census, and whereas, it's easier to read here, the overall goal of the government is to bridge all gaps between the community and the Census Bureau on mapping outreach activities, information centers, and to make citizens aware of the meaning and extreme importance of the census. Now therefore, I, Kelly Parker, Mayor of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, do hereby designate and proclaim that the City of Alva, Oklahoma, is committed to partnering with the Census Bureau to help ensure a full and accurate count in two thousand and twenty. Council members, I would entertain a motion to approve this proclamation.
Motion to approve two thousand and twenty census complete count proclamation?
Say.
I have a motion by Brandon Sherman, a second by Randy Stelling, to approve the proclamation for the two thousand and twenty census complete count. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
I'm not, I dressed for church camp, not a photo op.
Well, we're going to make you, your photograph, but this is, these are some posters that the State's Complete Count Committee has put out, and it just tells that everyone in Oklahoma counts, and so...
Oh, we'll put our seal on it.
Oh, okay. All right, and so I just brought a few. I'm sending Mr. Dunham some digital census material, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, be blessed.
I'll just point out, you're, I'm not going to make you say anything. Don't worry. He's a Fairview kid. He's going to school here at Northwestern, and the administration at the university speaks fairly highly of him, and I've had the opportunity to have him volunteer for some things with me before, and glad you're being involved in this important...
So am I, thank you.
All right, the next item is discussion in action on Freedom Riders proclamation. We've got some information here in the, in the packet, and I, Scotty, I know that you're prepared possibly to say some things if, if need be, but Scotty Cox gave me a call a few weeks ago that they are, an event is planned with the Freedom Riders, that they'll be taking a trip from south to north on Highway two eighty-one, making a stop in Alva, and this is to celebrate the hundredth year of service of the American Legion to the United States and the communities across our nation. The American Legion Riders are a group of folks that, you know, Scotty will be able better tell us what the group has, has done, but it's a, I think this is going to be a great opportunity to host some, you know, the heroes in our country and our, you know, around our country and our community. We have been working with the law enforcement and fire department as well as other, you guys have been working with other community groups to set up a meal for the evening of August third, I believe. And in addition, we would like to, you know, have community support as the riders are coming into town. Scotty, is there anything you guys would like to add, or any say on the, in regard to the event?
Some of what we're doing, what we'd like is, we would like a escort. We're going to line two eighty-one from the Alva sign all the way to the museum, and if we could, we would like to get an escort through town just to kind of stop the traffic. Right now, we're approximating about twenty to thirty Legion rider motorcycles, so most of them will all be wearing the same vest that I am, with the patch on the back.
I know we're planning to have ladder one up there at the intersection of two eighty-one and Fourteenth, or excuse me, Sixty-four and Fourteenth by the water tower, with the, you know, big American flag out there for everybody to see when they, they pull by, and I, I think it's a really great thing. I'm glad you brought it to my attention so that we could put together a proclamation for you this evening. Does council have any questions before we get to the proclamation? Well, thank you, Scotty, and all of the rest of you that are here this evening for, for that, and we'll move on to the proclamation. We haven't ever done two proclamations in one council meeting before, so this is uncharted territory. Proclamation, local American Legion centennial ride, whereas the American Legion was chartered by Congress on September sixteenth, nineteen nineteen, as a wartime veterans organization based on four pillars of service, Veterans Affairs, National Security, Youth, and Americanism. And whereas the American Legion is celebrating its one hundredth year of service to communities, states, and the nation in two thousand and nineteen, and whereas nearly two million wartime veterans who are American Legion members serve their communities at more than twelve thousand local posts across the nation, and whereas Post ninety-two in Alva has made a positive impact on the community through programs for youth, military personnel, veterans, and patriotic communities, and whereas the American Legion Riders is a program of the American Legion family consisting of motorcycle riders who belong to the American Legion, American Legion auxiliary and sons of the American Legion. And whereas Post ninety-two in Alva, Oklahoma, is located along U.S. Highway two eighty-one, also known as the American Legion Memorial Highway, which bisects the nation, passing through the states of North Dakota, South Dakota, Nebraska, Kansas, Oklahoma, and Texas. And whereas, American Legion Centennial Ride along the American Legion Memorial Highway presents a unique opportunity for American Legion Riders to spread the organization's legacy and vision through multiple local posts in honor of the hundredth anniversary. Now therefore, I, Kelly Parker, Mayor of Alva in the state of Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim August third, two thousand and nineteen, as Riding the American Legion Memorial Highway So, and witness whereof, I are here unto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, to be fixed herein the fifteenth day of July, two thousand and nineteen. Oh, let's vote on that. There could be threats if you don't vote properly. I would entertain a motion.
I'll motion to accept the Local American Legion Centennial Ride proclamation.
I have a motion by Daniel Winters, a second by Mary Hamilton, to approve the Local American Legion Centennial Ride proclamation. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
All right, now... Item twelve is discussion in action to authorize the city business manager, sure the state manager, right? Yeah. Oh, it says it online. Authorize the city business manager to bid out the repair and replacement of the professional building roof. Joe Don, go ahead and give us an overview, or Mary, either one.
Well, the problem is, is that we, our roof of the professional building, it's been leaking for a while. We've tried to patch it and do small repairs, and that just hasn't, that hadn't been able to cut the mustard. We did ask for cost estimates from several different organizations, companies. We had about five or six of them brought to us. They ranged anywhere from about forty-five thousand dollars to about a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. With this being said, we felt like Park and Building Committee met and discussed the repair, discussed the issue and the repairs needed, and came to the conclusion that what would be best for the City of Alva and for the professional building was just to replace the, replace the roof at the professional building with a product that was similar to what was used at the library a couple of years ago. Because we do expect this to be in excess of fifty thousand dollars, a bid, a bid package where it can be repaired, and submitted to prospective bidders. We do have a list of prospective bidders, and if, if this agenda item is approved tonight, there will, we anticipate to have the bid packet out and publicized by this weekend. We'll go in and we'll have to modify our bid specifications a little bit for the information that we've got, and we'll get it, but we'll get it out and try to have a quick turnaround on it.
As Joe Don said, this is going to be over fifty grand, likely going to be over fifty grand, so anything over fifty grand we have to bid out. So the motion this evening would be to go to bid, so, and publicize for bids. Are there any questions?
And any, any, the bid, the bids will be brought back in, to the council for them to award an official bid to the lowest investor.
And the reason we went with the bid was the forty-some thousand dollar one, the material and everything was so far less quality than what the other ones were, and so we wanted to make sure we had the...
And we're looking at replacement, not prepared for...
Yes.
Any other questions? I'd entertain a motion.
I will make the motion to authorize the city business manager to bid out the repair and replacement of the professional building roof.
Say.
Second.
I have a motion by Mary Hamilton, a second by Brandon Sherman, to authorize the city business manager to bid, to bid out the repair and replacement of the professional building roof. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Item 13 is Discussion and Action on the Approval of the Lease at Harper Road to Ben Orkut in the Amount of $285.48. As you can see on the agenda explanation, that this went out for sealed bids in June, and bids were open July 28th, no, it's not July 28th, yeah.
June 28th.
Bids were open June 28th. Two bidders participated, and Mr. Orkut's bid was the most.
Well, no, Mr. Orkut's bid is not the most, but H.E. Land and Cattle did rescind their bid for this, for this property, so in effect, Mr. Orkut was the only bidder.
And the bid documents are there in the materials. If there are any questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve the lease at Harper Road to Ben Orkut in the amount of $285.48.
Second.
I have a motion by Daniel Winters, a second by Randy Stelling, to approve the lease at Harper Road to Ben Orkut in the amount of $285.48. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Item 14 is Discussion and Action on Approval of Lease at Airport to James A. Weidner in the Amount of $300, or $35,552.12. The bid documents are also included here.
There were two bidders, he was the highest bidder.
Okay, Joe Don said there were two bidders, he was the highest bidder. I can't get the document to open, but...
The other bidder was H.E. Land and Cattle.
Okay. I would approve, or entertain a motion.
I'd make the motion to approve the lease bid of the airport to James A. Weidner in the Amount of $35,552.12.
Second.
I have a motion by Randy Stelling, with a second by Brandon Sherman, to approve the lease at the airport to James A. Weidner in the Amount of $35,552.12. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item 15 is Discussion and Action to Declare Surplus and Authorize the Disposal of Items Which Are Not Longer Needed by the City of Alva. We did this last month, and I believe these are some of the remaining items.
Yeah, this is an item that inadvertently got left off the list last month. It is a cement trailer that the street department no longer utilizes, belly dung.
That's a new.
No? Yeah, 1971, and we bought it used.
That is dollars.
But it's time for, it, it needs to have a new owner.
That being the case, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve declaring surplus to cement trailer.
Second.
I have a motion by Brandon Sherman, a second by Mary Hamilton, to declare surplus and authorize disposal of items which are not longer needed by the City of Alva. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item 16 is Discussion and Action to Enter Into Executive Session pursuant to 25 OS 307 B2 to discuss contract negotiations with IAFF Local 3782 in Alva, Oklahoma. Is there a motion?
Motion to enter into executive session.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Winters, to enter into executive session to discuss contract negotiations with the Firefighters Union. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Session. Item 18 is Action in Regards to the Negotiation with the Firefighters Union, and there is no action to take at this time, so we'll move on to item 20, which is Remarks and Inquiries by Council Members. Do the council members have anything they'd like to add to this agenda commentary?
Did I miss something?
Oh, yes, I thought it was coming next, okay. 19, we'll go back. Remarks and inquiries by citizens. We'll take public comments now, we'll limit each speaker to two minutes. We'll ask that you please come to the podium and tell us who you are. I will ask, though, that if this is, I guess it doesn't matter, if you want to talk about the pool now, that's fine, we are gonna go to the pool and have a public hearing regarding the pool, so if there are any public comments, we would take those at this time.
Will the comments be limited at the pool as well, Kate?
Yes.
We can't respond to comments, we can only respond to the public hearing, correct?
Correct.
So you can make a comment, but we can't respond if you have a question, pass away for public hearing.
Can you respond to the pool?
Yes, we can respond during a public hearing, can't respond during comments.
Or you can ask us about another item on the agenda that we've already talked about. All right. Item 20 is Remarks and Inquiries by Council Members.
I want to say that the Northwestern is hosting the Student Council's workshop again, camp, and the ladies from the Student Council have been in the store, and they love Alva. They could not say enough stuff about how nice the people in Alva have been to them, bringing in, what is it, this time, 280 kids?
Almost 300.
Almost 300 this time, and this is the second camp, and they said, everywhere they go, people in Alva have been nice to them, and have helped them, and comments about the hospital, you know, 300 kids, somebody's gonna get sick, and they said it's just, it's been great. Alva's just really been helpful.
Did we go past remarks, Kelly? So, some remarks?
Yeah, yeah, nobody's...
Okay, well, I was just being courteous and letting someone else go first, if they wanted to, but I do have some remarks.
Okay.
I'll go back.
I'm Megan Caldwell. First, I just want to read a little bit about the Economic Development Fund Tax, the one cent sales tax that was implemented in 1999, for the purposes of Northwestern scholarships to development, operations, and maintenance of the parks and recreational facilities, the recruitment of new industries, and the retention of existing industries, and then other projects as determined by the authority. These monies that are unused are moved into the general fund, and I wanted to also state that the economic development monies that are currently being used for the demolition of the dilapidated properties, I would like to know if those come out of the tax. Geo bond portion of the definition, government is legally allowed to increase the property tax rate to make up for any delinquencies if somebody, if we fall short of where we need to be for this geo bond and paying for the pool. Number three, report given by the city manager says that our current investments are $2,125,337.48, and our cash on hand is $307.38.97, for a total of $2,432,376.45. And then I also have a mold report from Suite J of the professional building, and the sample, control sample is from outside, and came back with 200 parts per million of penicillium aspergillus. In our back office, it came back with 4,100 parts per million of aspergillus, and in the front office, there's 9,640 parts per million. Those are extremely elevated. Some of the main things that can happen from that are to asthmatics, somebody with breathing problems, or a compromised immune system, and so those are the things that I know that they're part of why they've moved quickly on trying to remedy some of those, but we've got some issues with waiting on the mold remediation team to get here. Do you guys want a copy of our report for what we ran?
If you want to give us a copy, we'll take a copy of our kids.
It was in three weeks after the other one.
Any other public comments? Any other remarks from council members? Okay, we're not going to adjourn the city council meeting, we are going to suspend the city council meeting and move on to the Alva Utility Authority and the Alva Economic Development Authority after that. Light agendas, we'll get through to those as quickly as we can, and we'll, then we'll go to the pool. Angelica, when you're ready, will you please call the roll?
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Hannaford?
Stelling? Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is Discussion and Action on the Consent Agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, and will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of June 17, 2019. Item B, Approval of Claims in the Amount of $54,238.90, and Payable Expenses of $59,631.92. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd move to approve consent agenda, second.
I have a motion by Randy Stelling, with a second by Brandon Sherman, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item five is Discussion and Action Authorizing the City Business Manager to Prepare Bids on the 14th and Oklahoma Water Pressure Pump Construction and Installation. This is part of our 2018 series revenue bonds that we, we got for a series of different water and sewer line projects. Currently, there's $733,729 remaining in that account. These can only be used for our water and sewer line projects, cannot be used anywhere else in the city, and they were slated for several projects, the pressure pump at the 14th and Oklahoma Tower location is one of those planned projects. The engineers are estimating that this will come in at $398,125. Again, going out for bids, we would have the option to either approve or deny those bids, or accept the lowest investment if one would come in. Joe Don, you have anything to add, or does council have any questions?
I'm dead.
I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to the Alva City Business Manager to prepare bids on 14th and Oklahoma Water Pressure Pump Construction and Installation. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, we'll adjourn the Utility Authority meeting and open the Economic Development Authority meeting. Let's look, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Hannaford?
Stelling? Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is Discussion and Action on the Consent Agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of trustees. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, and will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of, consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of June 17, 2019, and Item B, Approval of Claims in the Amount of $14,149.92, and Payable Expenses of $15,864.50. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by Brandon Sherman, with a second by Daniel Winters, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item five is Discussion and Action to Declare Surplus and Authorize the Disposal of Items Which Are No Longer Needed by the Alva Economic Development Authority. The item is a 1990 Chevy flatbed pickup, which is no longer needed, and the plan would be to go out for sealed bids, as Joe Don says, this needs to become somebody else's possession. Anything else to add on that? Is that a red card?
It's a red card, thank you.
Council have any questions? I would entertain a motion.
Motion to declare surplus and authorize the disposal of items which are no longer needed by the Alva Economic Development Authority, the 1990 Chevy flatbed pickup.
Second.
I have a motion by Daniel Winters, and a second by Mary Hamilton, to declare surplus and authorize the disposal of items which are no longer needed by the Alva Economic Development Authority, specifically a 1990 Chevy flatbed pickup. Is there any further discussion? I would say that funds derived from the sale of this will go back to the department that it was sold from. Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Okay, it is 7:59 PM, we're gonna adjourn this meeting of the Economic Development Authority, and we will reconvene the city council meeting at the Alva Municipal Pool at the corner of 14th and Flynn in Alva, Oklahoma, at 8:15.